I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay. First thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, issues? Anything regarding the proposed agenda here?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion to approve the existing agenda.
Second.
Second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, we're honored to have Teri Eaton here in the house, and she's gonna kinda give us a little update, or Mike, you wanna introduce her, or a little update on some changes that have been going on on Springstead?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for... Can you hear me? Okay. Is it on?
It's surprising, Teri, you never needed a microphone before.
That's just like karaoke bars. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're here this evening because of SEC regulations and a purchase. There are a couple of changes that were asked in the city council to approve and to just make sure you understand what you are approving. First of all, starting in 2016, we, because of the new MA rules for SEC, anybody that issued bonds after that, we had to document and tell you, we always had that, we've just heard about our fees, but we had to create a document that would show you what our fees are, what our scope of services are, and give you all the information about it, so it had to be documented. It wasn't binding to you, but it was more of a disclosure document, so we had to be informed coming to tell you specifically what the services are. You know, we've been around 50 years, and a lot of this was done on a handshake, and we said, "This is what we're gonna charge you," and we said, "Okay." We had to get very detailed. So, anyone who issued bonds after 2016 had to have already filled out this agreement, and it's just a disclosure. And you haven't done that yet, but now we have a second item that happened, and that is Baker Tilly, Virgil Kraus is purchasing Springstead Incorporated, and they're purchasing, they wanted to get into the municipal advisory business, so they hired our firm, they bought our firm, along with a firm from Indiana, Anba. There are 80 people in our firm, and about 120, they're combining us into a 200-person municipal advisory firm. And so, we'll be a subdivision or a unit within the overall Baker Tilly firm, which has about 3,000 employees. You're gonna be still stuck working with me if you need to do science agreement, and I hope you will, 'cause I do enjoy working with you. They bought our company intact, is what I'm trying to say, so all the folks that you're used to working with from Springstead are all coming over as part of the change. The main changes that you'll see is our name will now be Baker Tilly, joined with Springstead and Anba for about six months, and then they're into, once people are aware of the fact that Baker Tilly now does MA work, then we'll take away the byline and we'll just be Baker Tilly. And some of the advantages we think that we're already seeing is, and I was just mentioning this to the mayor, you know, by joining with a strong accounting firm, which is what Baker Tilly is, and still keeping us intact as an MA firm, we're able to drop on some of the services. So, they have tax accountants and lawyers who are experts in all the tax credits, new market credits, opportunity zones, and so forth. So, instead of us subcontracting out or bringing in that services where they're necessary, we just bring them to the table, and they're our coworkers now. So, it's kinda nice to come in and create these more robust teams, and so as you have challenges with economic development, we can drop on that. They also have robust services in the accounting area. So, they do a lot of, in other states, budgeting, finance studies, analytics, and things like that, so there's a lot of things I'm still discovering about them that we can draw upon, and they're doing the same with us. So, we think it's co-part, a pretty good partnership. So, we hope to bring that to New Craig, and so that is a, the thing that we discovered is, in those contracts of people resigning back in 2016, there was a clause in them that prohibited us from assigning our agreements, the disclosure documents, to anyone else. And so, we're asking all of our clients, in order to make this clause any possible, to agree that it cannot be assignable, and so all of this will be brought in under the Baker Tilly umbrella. And because you had not, haven't issued bonds since 2016, this is all being done at one time, so the disclosure document includes a statement that talks about Baker Tilly, it's in section 9.2, the delegation of duties. And that talks about January 10th, 2019, Springstead announced their intention to combine with Baker Tilly, Virgil Kraus. It's expected that this combination will become effective on or about equal first, and the combined group will operate under the name Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC and is asking, you know, it's allowing us to assign it to Baker Tilly. And so, combined into one document and asking for your approval tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Teri, the, does Baker Tilly do audit work for me and his staff?
Yes, they do, but not in Minnesota, except for a couple. They don't audit the city of New Craig, and they are primarily in Wisconsin. So, Madison and a number of Wisconsin cities, they do a lot of audits there. They've tried to break into the Minnesota area a little bit, they've had a few places, and so in those cases, we're not doing the audit, where they do the audit, and we've been doing municipal advisory services, and again, it's not gonna affect you. There's a decision that we're leaving up to the city, I guess it, we were concerned that it could be a conflict of interest if we're auditing you, and we're also your fiduciary as your MA is in a conflict, we're taking it to the legal group, and that's something that indicates if that were happening, but they really have no intention to expand in Minnesota, they're making the decision to pull back in Minnesota, have this be their municipal area, and focus on audits in Wisconsin.
And some of the other services that you might offer, that you don't offer now, what would those be?
Well, some of them are in the investment area. We basically, we would only invest if you sold bonds, we help you invest the bond proceeds. They have a much more robust cash management, investing, anything to do with investments arm. And I think the biggest area that we've noticed already is in the area of tax, so of course, you know, instead of offering OR with tax increment, tax abatement, some of the tools that we've offered, if your zone is a new market credit or an opportunity zone, we have the ability to, we have right on staff, folks helping figure out the tax credits, to see if you can get a developer to be incentivized from that versus one of the other more common economic development tools that the city would employ, they manage it on their own through tax credits. I think also housing, they're very strong in the housing area, a lot of them are seeking, they don't write up the grants, but they're very familiar with the programs, and they create cash flows, and so we're, right now, for example, we're creating a joint Springstead-Baker Tilly, which is now a Baker Tilly group, but it's the mix of the two companies, to really come in and form a strong economic development plan to create housing, and to come up with an ongoing cash flow, so it's not just, "Let's fix this problem," and that, it's to create a whole plan for housing, so that they can create a change to all of their housing. So, that's one example, we're learning daily what they do and what we do.
Sure. Do Baker Tilly have an office in Twin Cities?
They do. They have, their headquarters are in Chicago, and they have a very large, I think it's almost like a second headquarters in Madison, and they have a building in the Capella Tower in Minneapolis, and there are about 200 employees there.
Okay. Thank you.
And I should say, we're keeping, the other things, we're keeping our offices at A-Paw, so there are about 50 Springstead employees, and we will still be in Craig Plaza.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, actually, I did have one question in regards to Appendix B, and I don't know if it's something that you can explain to me, since I'm not very familiar with municipal advisors. It's Appendix B, section G, and enrollment at 2. And it talks about if the issuance doesn't close, and it's not because the fault of the client, that there's a compensation still given to Springstead. What kind of situation would that occur, that we would still pay for something that didn't close?
That could be, let's say that we were working with you on a street and road project, and we created an official statement, we helped you with the rating, we put in, you know, 30 hours or so forth, and then the city decided, too many people petitioned, they don't want the street, we're not gonna do it, and they stopped. And the reason that they changed the billing to do that is, the SEC requires that your advisor doesn't recommend certain things with the idea that they may or may not be paid, whatever the outcome is, so we have to be outcome independent, so in other words, we're gonna get paid for what we put in so far, it's just hourly, and it's supposed to be, and I'm a fiduciary, so my job is, I have to put myself in your chair, and Michael's chair, and whoever's chair, and say, "Would I do this deal?" But it's again, so there isn't a temptation from an advisor who might say, "Let's keep going on this deal," or "Let's, you know, maybe push a revenue bond that shouldn't happen," and so that they're convincing, they're trying to persuade you to keep going on something, 'cause they only get paid if it happens. So, what they're saying is, we only get paid for what we're gonna do, and if you need to stop it, clearly, we're gonna recognize the top, because we're losing that to us. It's supposed to keep the independence.
No, that's very helpful, it's just, when I read it, just said, "Well, if it doesn't close and it's not our fault, then there's still fees to be paid," but you explained it, so this has been very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the new agreement with Springstead/Baker Tilly. I got a second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes by, 5-0. Thank you very much for showing up, and don't drive too fast over to Savage.
Thank you, and on behalf of Springstead and Baker Tilly, thank you. I think I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, 2019 Street and Utility Improvement Project.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Here for your consideration is a number of items related to the 2019 Street and Utility Improvement Project. I'll list them out, and we'll actually go through them individually, one by one. So, the first one will be the Turnback and Cooperative Construction Agreement with Scott County for the portion of County Road 37 that's included with the project. There'll be a resolution, again, for municipal concurrence for the jurisdictional transfers, basically the city taking jurisdiction over that roadway. Resolution accepting the bids, and we'll have a little subpart of that where we wanna talk briefly about the, an ad alternate called the Texas Under Seal, and then a consideration of the engineering agreement for construction services. So, those are the four items for consideration here.
Chris, before you go too far, I'd like to introduce in the audience with us tonight is Tony Winnicky, the Scott County engineer. He's here for these items, all associated with County Road 37, and he's a resource, we're not gonna call him unless you have questions from the county's perspective. They have done all the work behind, on their end, to get it here tonight, and so he's here as a resource.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
So, the first item, the Turnback and Cooperative Construction Agreement, this is, so it'll be the first item on your list of items for approval. This has been in the works for probably almost about two years now, I think we had a first conversation, discussion about this at least two years ago. It was initially, the county had looked at doing improvements to County Road 37 from 21 down all the way over to Main Street, had looked at doing that last year in 2018 initially, and then as we got a little further along, and we started looking at the city's project that was being considered, it made sense to look at a cooperative project. So, all the engineering to date, the pre-engineering feasibility study, the design engineering that was handled by memorandum of understanding that covered the county's costs for the city. Now that we've gotten to the point where the plans were completed, the project was bid, and we have construction estimates, the next step was to really to do a construction cooperative agreement, basically again, to direct what portions of the project the county would cover, as well as, at the same time, it made sense to take care of the turnback agreement as well. So, again, we've talked about this in the past, County Road 37 has always been under the transportation plan, to be turned back from Scott County to the city, again, this is a natural progression that happens throughout the roadway systems. And if you recall, last, I think late in 2017, the county actually took their jurisdiction, county state aid highway designation off of the east area, east of Columbus Avenue, so it was actually turned from Cassaw, County Road, County State Aid Highway, to County Road, and that was so they could assign that mileage somewhere else. It wasn't a disadvantage to us, in fact, in a small amount, it was actually an advantage to us to do that. So, at this point, again, the agreement is really to not only cover the obligations for construction, bring this up to par, but basically also that this will be turned back to the city, and the city will take jurisdiction over it. I don't know if there's maybe a few highlights I can point out in the construction agreement, again, it's a lot of whereas's, kind of the history of a turnback discussion, again, the county will reimburse the city for its share of construction cost. Just kinda jumping through this real quick, I'm on the second page of the agreement. Item 2, again, just saying again, the county will reimburse the city for its share of construction. The county does have the cost participation policy, and pretty much everything they've got here follows that policy. In short, they're paying for all the payment improvements, any curb that's damaged that needs to be repaired, the stuff that is being split, basically 50/50 is things like the ADA improvements, storm sewer upgrades, things like that. So, again, it's outlined in the cost estimates, again, what their obligation will be. Item number 4 talks about the total estimated construction engineering and inspection. We don't show the breakdown here, but about $80,000 is the county's share, and about $118,000 is the city's share. Again, the city's portion of this project is a lot greater than the county's.
Is that, that $198,000, is that for the whole project, or is...
No, that's all the construction administration, construction engineering.
But is that for just 37, or for...
No, that's the whole project, the whole project. So, again, it wasn't really broke down here, but again, the county shares about $80,000, and the city shares about $118. And those are, again, estimated, and includes all the inspection and things like that. Item 6 is, again, kinda summarizes, again, those breakdowns that I referred to, talks about 100% share county, some of them are split 50/50, again, and these all follow the county's cost participation policy. Item H, just to kinda point out, we're still in the works, communication right now with Union Pacific to look at replacement of the railroad paths, so that's the country paths across the roadway. We anticipate that it's still gonna happen, and we're getting kind of the message from U.P. that that will happen this year. The county would be covering all the costs in the roadway, just outside the roadway, and then it'll be a shared cost in the boulevard, again, based on their cost participation policy. But what we did is, we needed it out, if for some reason it can't occur this year, it's not the end of the world, it has to get pushed off, and we won't be able to do it next year, because 37 will be the detour route for the Main Street project. That means the earliest, it could definitely be 2021, and so we had it basically to give us the ability to get it completed by 2021 or 2022, if it falls apart this year, and you can't, we just can't get it, get U.P. in here to take care of it. And so, we did list an estimated cost, and in case it carried out, the city would at least get paid for it, and the city had to do it someday in the future. So, I kinda gave it a little leeway for both agencies there. Right, just again, just talks about jurisdictional transfers, and basically, again, that the city would be able to own it over the roadway, and we picked the date of May 1st. Again, the county acknowledges they'll have a financial obligation through the end of this project until it's completed and accepted, but in case there were decisions that needed to be made, that we didn't need to make, run everything through the county, other than the fiscal stuff. There's change orders, things like that, again, mutually with the agencies, that we will, you know, work directly with the county in case there are change orders or something that would need to be done, that they would have a financial obligation for. But we wanted to make sure if there was a decision made on why we're moving a catch basin, or why we're putting a light pole somewhere, that it's going to become the city's road, they wanted us to have, kind of, have authority over that road during this project.
Tony, we have a question coming in.
Well, I'm just curious, you know, the city, we're accepting this road back from the county, but now we're splitting some of those costs, is that standard, in other appropriations that you've done some things in?
Yeah, usually, most of the cities, especially when you start talking about storm sewer and sidewalk, pretty traditionally are split. The counties look at it as their transportation, and it's the city and the residents that are benefiting by, you know, storm sewer drainage, sidewalks, et cetera, so that's pretty standard.
I got a question for you too, if you're... The difference in the bids are just, you know, it's like $700,000, and we chose the bid. What ain't we gonna get that the other bid would get?
Well, maybe we could, if we could wait, that's what, item number 3, if we can wait till we get to that one, we'll go through the bid. So, this was just, right now, we'll just talk about the cost participation agreement and turnback agreement. So, the rest of it's pretty much a boilerplate, again, kinda cruising through here, I'm on the, I think the fourth page, item number 12, again, there is a, it's called a bridge, but basically it's a box culvert, the city will pay jurisdiction. That was improved back in 1996, so it's in definitely very good shape, not an issue. And again, this, this whole roadway will actually become part of the city's state aid system. This gets added one-to-one, right on top of everything we already have, if you recall. We talked about the 20% increase when we added some roadway, well, this will take a full mile, 1.55 miles gets added right into our state aid system, and then we'll start generating more revenue for that. Item number 13, just kinda more pointing it out, and I know this is an item for later on the agenda, again, there's, I think, I believe there's nine properties that actually have a County Road 37 address, and that affects them, and that'll have to be changed as well. And then, basically, the rest, again, just again, the city will be assuming responsibility and taking authority over the project. So, again, I guess summarizing that, that's kinda, that's a nutshell, and we've been kinda back and forth between staff, county staff, and the city attorney has reviewed this, so I guess, any questions related to that agreement?
What we have it, we get an approval. I'm just curious, I mean, you know, what's the reason for us taking this road on? I mean, would it still stay county road, and the county be responsible for it, or is there any advantage to the city to have that?
Well...
Or are you just helping the county out?
Well, no, no, and again, this is pretty much, and the same thing happens to the counties as well, so they start taking over, turn back the state highways, so this is not really a true county road, as the county roads go. The intent was really that some of this mileage will eventually get pushed out to, there's always been the talk of Alton Avenue becoming kind of the county bypass, and that mileage would get pushed out to, or Cassaw mileage would get pushed out to a roadway like that, and I don't know, Tony, if you can add any more comment to that, or...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so, we look at all of our roadways and kinda jurisdictional ownership, and kinda what makes sense from a high level to more of a local level, from our material roadways down to local streets, and we've been working with the city for quite some time on, you know, who should really own this roadway, and what is really kind of the purpose of this roadway from a functional standpoint, and it makes sense that it really serves more of a local use than it does a county road function, and as Chris has said, we've talked about long-term what that plan is for County Road 15, and that extension down to 19 at some point. So, this is just a step towards that direction, and making that transfer at this time.
And I can say that, you know, from a state aid and revenue standpoint, again, the city will gain a fair amount of additional revenue. Now, I may just say that in 20, 25 years, when something needs to be done, and we've collected enough revenue to pay for 100%, no, that's not the case, 'cause that's, that's the case on every roadway we have in the city, that, you know, you've gotta supplement it with other funding, et cetera. But jurisdictionally, it makes sense that it becomes the city. And again, every city's going through this, and ultimately, if, you know, if the city said no, I guess the county would have to decide, are they gonna do anything with the roadway at this time? That would certainly be a concern or question.
Once this road is turned back, if it's moved, is, what else, do we just have one section left that's in Scott County?
Yes, correct, so County Road 11, Columbus Avenue.
15.
I'm sorry, 15, there's too many cities do County Road. Yeah, so 15 on Columbus Avenue, and up to 12 and going east, is still currently a Cassaw, and the discussion here is that, again, they want to remove that designation from Cassaw to county road. Again, there's some small advantage for us to do that, if they're not planning to use state aid funds, and again, the discussion is to have that be a turnback as well in the future. On the south side, we have the same thing on First Avenue Southeast with the sewer county as well. And again, their intent was to move that Cassaw designation, well, they actually already have it, pretty much, but they're, again, their intent, or the long-term plan was that Alton Avenue alignment would become a county alignment in the future, where those destinations would go.
I guess I don't understand where the advantage is. I mean, obviously, the county, other than the fact that it's gonna be put on our taxpayers for the assessments and everything else, but I don't see what we're gaining.
Well, you're gaining some control over the roadway, and let things happen, otherwise we're at the limo of the county whenever they decide to do something.
Right, but the residents could still petition their commissioner to get that completed, if they're just gonna walk away from it, which I don't see the feeling, but, does that make any sense?
It's a good, bad, the question, I think. In fact, I could see where they say there were jurisdictional reasons, and everybody uses that road, does live in Scott County, so I don't know. It's a good question, John.
Well, besides getting some state aid money we get from that road, that we wouldn't get if it wasn't turned over, is the obvious one. I don't know how much that is annually, but...
I apologize, 'cause I did calculate it, but it's been a couple weeks, I totally forgot what it was. I mean, it's tens of thousands of dollars a year, but it's mile and a half a road that we're gaining. And I, yeah, I had done an exact calculation of what I expected that change in revenue to be, and it's, like I said, it's fairly significant. And that's, that is why the state aid system does do it that way, where you, again, you take it over, and it's 100% mile-per-mile state aid route versus just another street that we have to take over and get 20% credit for it, so it's more than that, so...
Okay. Chris, I just had to, just make sure I understand this correctly, the box culvert that you referred to, the deferred maintenance that has not been done, that the county has agreed to do, is that the same items that are listed on the bridge inspection report from 2015?
I believe so, so this is probably just more routine maintenance, and so, again, they've opted to take care of that before, as part of the agreement, again, removing the debris, cutting brush, and touching up the rip rap.
So, it was inspected in 2017, and the items listed in 2015 weren't corrected, and it was still the same items?
I, I don't know if it's the same items, or it's just, you know, when you talk about growth and the brush, and that stuff that happens, could have certainly grown since then as well. then as well.
And a dream, a pretty large, you know, I think it's been there a while. Okay, thank you.
And then I guess one, maybe just another quick item on the, on the bridge stuff. I mean, the one advantage too is we do, Scott County does inspect, uh, we have at least two other bridges in town, box culverts, and they do provide the maintenance service for that. Obviously, the city pays for it, but they have the authority, the expertise to do that. It's something they'll continue to do, again, with mutual agreement between the two agencies.
Any other questions or comments for Chris? Now, do you want us to act on this one first?
Yeah, I think we would need to act on this agreement and the resolution, uh, that is attached to it as well. So authority to, I think our comment was, yeah, it's a separate item, but yeah, authorize the mayor and the city administrator to enter into the turn back and cooperate construction agreement with Scott County. And then the next item is, with that, is approve the attached resolution for municipal concurrence of your jurisdictional transfer of the turn back of Casaw 37 and County Road 37 to the city of New Prague.
Okay. I guess, uh, what's for motion to go on the agreement with the turn back and then also the resolution for mutual concurrence?
We'll do good.
Okay, you got a motion by Rick Silas?
Just clarification, there's two resolutions being performed?
No, this, this, the first action is to approve, enter into the turn back and cooperate construction agreement. That's, it's this action.
Okay, so not the concurrence, okay. That's what you're moving?
No, the resolution will be in the next action.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion by Rick Silas, second by Bruce Wolf to, uh, who, that they turn back and cooperate construction agreement. If there's no other comments, on favor say aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay, passes 401. Next is the actual resolution of municipal concurrence, right, Mike?
Which, correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I got a second by Bruce Wolf. If there's no other comments, on favor say aye. Aye, any opposition?
Aye.
Okay. Four, passes 401. Now we're at the bid, item, right?
Yep, the next item would be, uh, discussion of the, uh, the bids. So, uh, the bid opening, the bid opening was held on Friday, March 22nd. There were three bids received for the project. Uh, I, myself and Glenn and other staff were, were present for the bid opening. Shown in the report, the bids ranged from a high of just under 3.9 million to a low of about 3.1 million. The engineer's estimate was just under 3.3 million. Low bid was received by GMH Asphalt Corporation out of Chaska. They have not done work in New Prague. In the past, we, I personally don't have any experience with them and the staff does as well, but colleagues of mine in other offices working in other communities have worked with them, other cities. They have a pretty extensive resume in the West Metro. Did do some checking around and the one common, uh, comment that I got was, is this a paving project? This is exactly what, you know, what they do. And that's exactly, this is the type of project we're looking at. So, um, uh, based on the bids, based on references, um, and their background, we basically have no reason to recommend a denial, that they're certainly capable of doing the work and, uh, with that, we're recommending award of bid for GMH Asphalt for that base bid.
Do we gotta take their bid then or bring it to the lowest? Or, um, you know, there's a difference between, you know, about $700,000. I'm just wondering what does Midwest do that GMH don't do?
Well, when it comes to municipal contracting, um, we pretty much are stuck with, I don't want to say stuck with, pretty much need to find out the lowest, we, lowest responsible bidder. And in this case, GMH is certainly the lowest and they are responsible. If we were to choose a different bid and that, we'd have to have very good justification why we would not be taking a low bid.
And prevailing wages is, is calculated in this, correct?
Um, this is not a stated project, so it doesn't actually have, uh, prevailing wages. So it's standard wages competitive bid.
That just blows my mind, you know, and I'm just wondering, you know, is it a low-cut bid, but if, you know, if, you know, like I can throw a, a low, low-ball bid and underbid everybody, I mean...
No, he's required to submit their pricing based on the quantities that the engineers have estimated. That's why I included the bid tab in there for you to take a look at it. But if you go down the individual comments, you can take a look at the items of work and what the unit prices are and how it's different amongst each of the three different bidders as compared to the engineer's estimate. And you'll find differences like this in this kind of bidding.
Yeah. And I, I do know that during the bidding, I was expecting to, uh, in, you know, getting questions, inquiries from contractors, I, I definitely was expecting bids from both of these contractors. Charred, um, there's now, I, O and G Midwest, they've done a lot of work in the city, that goes with kind of expecting a bid from them as well, but hadn't heard from them during the bidding process. But these two bid, the two top bidders were the ones I was expecting, certainly expecting a competitive bid, bid from them. They definitely came in where we expected or even lower. And again, um, based on municipal contracting, we pretty much have to follow the lowest responsible bidder. And in this case, I can't recommend you doing anything other than that.
We don't know what other schedules or other activities that they have and how this fits in with, uh, some of their scheduling, I find, that, uh, that in the variance in the pricing, is it really kind of depends on what their workload is for the summer and how ideally it fits into your schedule?
Yeah. I do know that Valley Paving, they actually got a couple, they got a Scott County, large Scott County paving project in the, and then they also got a large Mid Dot project, uh, overlay here on 21. So you would have thought they'd been competitive, but they may have actually have a lot of work and so having to balance, balance that as well. So, um, obviously the GMH con, bid is, definitely was under what we had estimated, so...
Christie, um, the only, this is the only thing that kind of sticks out is a little immaterial number really is the, uh, tax code, which it, it shows 0.01 for a unit price at $87. And that, I'm just asking the question, is there anything that you saw that would make it seem like, uh, the contractor didn't understand any of the particular items or there was a mistake?
No, the, every, every estimator has little, different little tricks that they do. It's simply what they did on that case is they put the tax code.
Somewhere else.
Quality into the baby. That's, that's what they would have done.
And then just a general question, that's necessarily about this bid somewhat, but I noticed the storm sewer and sanitary were all over, everyone was over the engineer's estimates. Is that because they're not, that's not prevailing with?
Well, no, no, no. I, that was a very difficult one to estimate because if you look at the storm sewer work we're doing, it's piddly work. We're, uh, taking out an old catch basin and a couple sections of pipe and putting in new pipe and a new catch basin. So it's, it's not like work where they just start laying and laying a thousand feet of storm pipe. So we, we did estimate it higher than we would have if it was new storm sewer construction, but it was hard, a little hard to estimate. Now, I had a project, uh, two years ago with similar kind of stuff and it was kind of a flip-flop. Even the general contractor at that time said, geez, we had a really good bid from the subcontractor, couldn't turn it down. And so it's just, it's a real hard item to estimate. I do know the county is actually, the county had done initial cost estimate for 17, 18 construction, and their numbers were actually a little higher than ours. And I was, I should have followed their estimate numbers a little better, so...
And then just to clarify, there were seven bids received or three?
Three. I, I apologize for that. There was a typo, uh, a hope from another performance, so...
Were you surprised there were only three bids?
Not really. I, I was expecting maybe one or two more paving contractors to bid on it, so, um, I'm not sure what it changed where we're at for numbers, but within that, have, have a few more contractors.
So, Mike, this is a question for you. So we're looking at this total bid of 3.119 and a portion of it is the county's. Are we footing the bill upfront and getting repaid or how is that?
The county upon execution of the contract and submit all of, uh, based on the preliminary estimates that are contained, uh, Ashley was back in the...
Yeah, it was...
...agreement. They will, they will provide us 95% of the construction cost of their repair. They'll provide that up to, upfront to us before we begin the project.
So then we're only bonding what we are...
Yeah, we'll be taking a look at mostly our share because we'll get the other 5% for engineering and construction at the end of the project. Once we know quantities, we can settle up on the, the cost splits. But yeah, I won't have to go off and bond for much of the county's share of the project.
So the county's share on their estimate is like 1.472?
Yeah, we'll get 95% of that.
And so then what we actually bond is 3.119 less that?
Yeah, I've got to go back now with these numbers and everything, cherry heat, and we'll put all that together and make sure that we take a look at cash flows and construction schedules and that and try to make sure that the timing works out so that we don't get caught short, particularly we've got some length and some of the final holes that that come in. So we just have to blend all that to arrive at a final loan.
I just wanted to clarify that even though projects 3.1, our, our portion is, is...
But that's very nice that the county was willing to put that in the agreement so that we don't have to go off and bond it.
I didn't know if it was similar to 2020 where we were bonding and getting paid back over time from our buddies at Mid Dot.
So, just to clarify, so just the County Road 37 portion is the 1.472 of the third?
Yeah, that's what it said in the other.
I thought it was probably just...
Yeah, it's on the last page there.
Oh.
I've got it here, yeah, but something like that.
Yeah. Says 1.472751 is the county's estimate.
Yeah, they have the engineering.
Right.
And 95% of that as well be paid upfront by the county. So anyway, it'll hunt, uh, might as well lay a little bit of a sell the volume against we, and, uh, there's a lot of more cash flow than upfront by having that 95% from the county.
Well, I just, I want to just clarify something. That, uh, I'm for the local streets that are going to be redone, Cherrywood and Bohemian Street, or a partway all that. It was just the County Road 37 that I was, again, was taken back from the county, so...
But, but the other, the other side of that coin, if you take a look at the volume of paving that's covered in County Road 37, that really is beneficial to us on our local project because it's providing a, a much larger project than if we were just doing just the local streets. The cost of construction on that mill and overlay might have been more than the progress sheer that we're having in here now because of the benefit of the larger bid.
And there's certainly mutual benefit for both agencies, just even just in the engineering and professional services, just because it's a bigger project and more efficient.
1.472 million? No.
So, before we get any fun of the bid, we have to talk about this Texas Holden, Alden Avenue, Scotland, Texas Holden?
So we did a, we did an add alternate, uh, bid item. This is actually something that staff and I, we've actually discussed often on for the last couple of years and, and one of those things just kind of got overlooked as we got into the details. So it was easy enough that we, we bid it as an add alternate, so it's not something you have to award, but, um, it's something we, at this point, are recommending and the simplest way to, to explain it was in the illustrations that we provided. Basically what it is, is, uh, and there's a, a small handful of communities are doing this, like Scott County, I just was informed, has done this as well on, on the roads. Way it is, is when the, in, in, on an overlay project, so they go in and they do a milling overlay, but they do the mill and before they overlay, you actually come through and you do a seal coat. It seems a little odd. So a seal coat is what you're used to seeing on the surface. You do a seal coat, it's actually got a little extra oil, they still put the rock down. And what it does is it provides a little bit of what I call shear layer. Whenever you do a overlay project...
Like a balline agent, is it like a balline agent?
Well, in a way, but, so what happens, whenever you do an overlay project, so if you go out there, you do a milling overlay, you've got, you've got cracking on the streets. Okay, I used to put those photos, illustrations to show you. You got crackings on the street and you always get reflective cracking. I mean, the crack basically extends up into that new overlay and becomes a, you know, opening in the pavement where water can get in, infiltrate, et cetera. Old Works staff will be out regardless of what we do, there'll be cracking and they will be out and they'll have to route and they will have to seal. Now, there've been a handful of studies done and there's a head, small handful of communities that have done this underseal application and swear on it that it, and, and, you know, the illustrations show it, that it reduces the amount of cracking, which reduces the amount of, you know, water that infiltrates and, and amount, you know, the amount of crack filling that has to be done and inevitably is going to extend the life of that pavement. So, you know, I mean, ask Glenn to comment on some of the conversations he had with some of the Mid Dot staff. I was, I apologize, I was on vacation last week and didn't get a chance to kind of do a little more research, but the one thing we can say is if we don't do it, we will definitely get more cracking and the crack, more cracking will, that's definitely short the life of that pavement than if we don't do it. Now, the question is, is what, you know, that balance of the benefit of, you know, the cost versus the benefit, that's a hard one for us to, to analyze, you know, down to the dollar kind of thing.
It makes sense. I mean, and you, even if you're doing flooring, you gotta easily level it first, you know? Otherwise, the, uh, flooring cracks on you and stuff, so it makes sense with powder.
So, and I don't know, Glenn, you want to comment on any of the, maybe some of the conversations you had with a couple folks over at Mid Dot as well?
So I talked to a number of people from Mid Dot, uh, engineers in the, in the materials section of either Metro District 7, uh, District 8, which is the Wilmer area. Uh, Metro naturally, just because it's Metro, uh, they've done more of it. Unfortunately, even Metro or, uh, Mid Dot's telling us, it hasn't been around that long. We don't have study after study to prove that it's the best thing in the world. Uh, Tim Klein, who is the materials engineer for the Metro District, uh, said, in my opinion, it is the best thing in the world. It will save roads, it will make roads last longer. He said, two areas that would be close to us that you could actually drive to and check out is Highway 5 between, um, uh, I'm sorry.
Royal Way.
Yeah, Young America and, uh, Wakoni. Uh, he said we did a Texas underseal on that. He said, I can't remember the exact year, was it in the last five years? According to Google Earth, if you go on there and look previous years and, and the last video or the last drive-through they did was last year, 2018. I would say it was done in the last two or three years. He said, there's no cracks coming through. He said, they will. He said, you will eventually see a crack here or there show up, but he said, if you had seen it before we did the milling overlay, he said, it's, he said, in my opinion, that's a true testament that it doesn't make a difference. Uh, the other area they did it was on, um, Highway 101 north of Highway 5. He said, we did, that was one of the first projects we ever did, so we did one mile with a Texas underseal. And then the next mile, we did nothing but a milling overlay. And he says, if you drive that road, he says, driveability and the number of cracks, he said, there'd be no question in your mind, what was a Texas underseal and what wasn't a Texas underseal? So he said, there's another area that's close to you. They're also going the next step now, uh, and what this, this client is calling the super Texas underseal, is they're going to mill up three or four inches of asphalt and they plan on doing it on Highway 19 when that's awarded. That's, that hasn't happened yet, but that's going to happen here in the near future. Uh, I'm sorry, Highway 13 from 19 to 282. So they're going to cold mill three or four inches of the existing asphalt, put it into a recycler, they add hot... They add hot oil to that, they lay that back down onto the road, they roll that, pack it, let it cool, and then they'll put two or three inches of asphalt on top of that. And he said, all that's doing is, is giving us kind of a membrane in between the old asphalt, which add the cracks, to the new asphalt. He said, for a residential street, that'd be overkill. He said, you couldn't afford to do it, you wouldn't want even paying to do it. But he says for a high-volume road, like our highways are, he said, we're going to start experimenting with that because we think that's going to make our roads last longer between milling overlays. His opinion, Eden Prairie talked about that they estimate that you'll see 35 to 40% less cracks come through within the first two, three, four years. He said, I think that's kind of conservative. I bumped that personally, but that's my personal opinion, he said. Unfortunately, we don't have sheets and data and cost effective and all that stuff. Nobody does yet. It's fairly new. But everybody we're talking to is really kind of putting their stamp on it and saying, we think it makes a difference. We think it makes that road, first off, look better. As Chris said, if you can keep a crack off of a road, that prevents water from getting down into that pavement, which then defreeze and thaw is what creates the problem.
So this bid, the add alternate bid, is, is that for all the streets that we're planning to redo in this, in this project?
Except County Road 37 because that's a total reclaim.
Okay.
That's not just a milling overlay, that is all the asphalt getting ground up down to the ground.
Okay, so when you get down to the class five or whatever, this project doesn't, this process doesn't work?
Nope, would, would not do you any good. You'd be, that'd be a waste of money.
Didn't you just say though that, that other public works directors that on the high-volume roads and not residential streets?
For this cold mill and recycling program where you're actually going to have a lot thicker, you're going to have three or four inches of material you're putting down, where the Texas, true Texas under seal will look a lot like a seal coat on top of the new roads that we do where when we pave a road, it's a, it's a layer of oil, some rock on top of that, and then asphalt on top of that.
So this 190,000 wasn't in the initial assessments?
190,000.
Or 109,000. What will that do to the assessments? Nothing at all?
We'll pick that up at the city overall, part of the bonding project.
But we gave them an estimate or what their assessment will already be?
Right, but he's saying he's not including that.
We want to recommend that you change the assessments.
No, oh, no, but I, just so the homeowners know that it's not, if they're planning on $1,300, what's this 109,000 going to do? Is it 1,400 then?
No, it's not proposed to change. Assessment rates are set a lot. This would be more of a preventative maintenance investment, just like, you know, what other things we can do.
Oh, okay.
Can you explain or remind me how much the two minutes is now on these roads that we're doing?
They vary all over. Some of them are four inches to three, three to four inches, just it varies depending on the years they were constructed.
And on those streets, we're taking off two inches?
No, we're, we're taking off, in some cases, we're only taking off about an inch, inch and a half off the, out by the edge of the road and a couple others were taken off across the full width, an inch, inch and a half. We're really more, we're just adding more pavement to the pavement that's there. That's generally what we're trying to do. So we're not taking away structure, we're actually adding structure.
So in case where we're not taking the crown or the middle off or we're still putting this on and then something on top of it?
Correct.
So we're actually raising the height?
Yeah, well, in a lot of cases, the roadways have settled, so there's less crown already. So again, you, you need to provide a little bit of space along the curb for that new pavement. So that's why you mill off, you know, about an inch and a half, it tapers off to about zero at 10 feet. And then you pave that new layer all the way over. And so you increase the crown, you increase the thickness of the structure that's out in the middle of the road where most of the people drive anyway. So again, you're adding, adding more, more structure to it and helping to get the drainage off that, off that pavement, off that crown.
I did wonder by the examples that you're providing to us, whether the amount taken off was a factor in it? And whether just the fact that you're adding the membrane is giving you the benefit? Or is it the amount of stuff you're putting on top of it or the amount you're taking off?
I think everybody would agree it's, it's the membrane that you're adding, adding. If you between that layer that's cracked, so the old existing pavement that's cracked, so it's that membrane that you're at, adding from the new pavement. So the new pavement has a lot more flexibility than the old stuff. The oils have gotten, have gotten better over the years. And the pavement that's old is stiffer and more brittle. And again, the cracks are there. And again, they just, they have the ability as they move, expand and contract to reflect those cracks in the pavement. By preventing that, putting that membrane in there creates a little bit of a shear layer, I think. It allows a little more flexibility between those two, two layers. That's the theory behind it.
And do you know the theory of cracking? Why does it seem like so many cracks are perpendicular to them? Like they're almost sections?
Well, because it's a long road and expansion and contraction is happening the same on the width. But the length, there's a lot more length of road, so it has to give somewhere. And when it gives, that's where you're going to see the cracks trans, you know, traverse perpendicularly the road. And you'll see the spacing pretty consistent. So the one thing we've been doing on, on the new roads, you may, you may have noticed this, is we go out and do a saw and seal. We actually go out there and put that crack, that line in the pavement ahead of time. So we put it where it needs to be and we seal it right away so it never has the ability for water to infiltrate in. So if you've noticed on the new projects, where a course goes down, we've done saw and seal. We can't do it on an overlay project, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be cost effective because the cracks are already there. So we can't control where the cracks are because there's cracks all over under the pavement, under the overlay. But we can do it on new pavement and prevent that cracking occurring.
Does the cost of this affect any of the other costs like your, your fees or engineering costs? Or are any of those numbers going to change?
No, so, no. Inevitably, there's a little bit more time, but the resident project representative, which is the construction observer, is an hourly fee. So the hourly fee, yeah, there might be a little bit more hours involved. But again, that's where we have a little bit of contingency because we never know exactly how much time that contract is going to take. So that's why those fees are hourly and inevitably we like to come, we intend or hope to come in under on an hourly rate. So is it going to cost more from an engineering, a little bit in hours? Not considerably because they're out on a very big project, probably runs around checking everything out at the same time.
Any other comments? What's that?
Yeah, Bruce came up to talk about this part of the speed process. We've got lighting. Remember going back to the public hearing process, we heard residents up on County Road 37 how that places it was done. Remember that from the list of items. So I've had Bruce to come up, that we included in this bid, the owners to do additional lighting up through this corridor. And I want Bruce to touch on what he expects to see that will be added to help improve that corridor.
Quickly, is the intent that starting that fall figure ready that that first roundabout, working our way south, that we're, will replace all of the lighting along Columbus there? And then there was concern from the council, as mentioned, that, I don't know if it was actually from you or from one of the residents that lived along County Road 37, that the lighting was fairly poor, especially during the fall and so when it got dark early. It's our intent to re-light then County Road 37 from Columbus Avenue all the way to Main Street or intersection of, and Main there. Replace the current lighting and put in a new lighting to the standards that meet those, that type of road there. Then also with consideration for pedestrian traffic that is, there is quite a bit of that on County Road 37. So we've got to be working not only with SCA's but with engineers that we work with, with lighting for utilities. Think they have a good design for that, so that is also included in the project.
So it's already in the bid?
Well, I want to point out, it's not actually part of the construction bid with the general contractor. It was part of the whole project cost and was part of originally planned and budgeted in the feasibility study. It's still within the project budget and it's included with the project. But again, it'll be done by New Prairie Utilities, so. 135,000. Something like that. And it's all part of the financing plan and still within the budget. We've outlined in fact what is below the study. Bruce, you are correct. Want to bargain?
Any other questions?
I'll move you through.
Are you, which are you approving?
We're approving.
The low bid along with the add alternate, or are you?
Right, well, isn't it 190401?
Yes, but there's.
Was that the 00?
Are you?
Yes.
With the add alternate?
Yep.
The 3.2 million?
Yep.
Okay. I got a motion by Rick Seiler that he's. To approve the total base bid and alternate of 3.229, correct? Okay, you got that motion? I will second that. So if there's no other comments, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Okay. The final piece?
Final, final item is consideration of our agreement for construction services. Typically, we would have done this during the design phase, but when, because we're working through agreements with the county, et cetera, it made the most sense to wait until we got to the construction phase after the bid to bring our construction services agreement to the city. So this has been reviewed by staff, by the county, and they want to comment on it. But basically outlines our work through the end of the project, construction administration, construction observation. There is some stating on the project, which is related and also to the roundabouts. Again, as I mentioned, the construction observation, we've typically done that on an hourly basis to get, not knowing the contractor, how much time might be involved. It gives us a little, little range of wiggle room depending on if it happens fast or takes a little more time or weather delays and things like that. Record drawings and then obviously the assessments at the end of the project. So those are the different phases of the tasks we have on the agreement. I guess with that all, any final questions or any final questions or staff?
Anyone have any questions or comments? So are we approving the 198.5 or the?
That's correct. That's correct.
Is the, what's the other one, 362.5?
That is the total, so to date for the pre-designed building engineering and final design plans bidding, that was the 164 to date. 198.5 is the, the construction services for the total.
And that's a disagreement you need to action on?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any comments or anything? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the construction engineering fees.
I'll second.
I got a second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? If not, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We don't have any stone.
Well, isn't that a good thing? We like it more than you guys. As for you, we have state contract pricing for replacing the existing 2005 John Deere payloaders. Some of you were involved in the budget discussions, some of you weren't. But this payloader that we're proposing to get rid of is a year earlier than our capital improvement program would typically have us do that. We keep these payloads for 15 years. This, this 2005 that we had, or have, we've had some trouble with it and we had concerns that we're going to continue to have trouble with it. So it was brought in front of the council at budget time to look at replacing it. Originally, it was allocated to come out of the, the street for the general fund budget. And then it was decided that we would utilize capital equipment funds to purchase this payloader if you choose to do that. So anyway, we've got three different prices, all state contract prices. RDO equipment priced out of John Deere 544L was the best price. They did make some corrections to what we'll consider to be kind of a fault of the old piece of equipment. They put coolers on the axles and on the differentials, intercoolers, that we come to find out that was the problem with our old one. It just got too hot and caused the seals to pull apart and we'd lose the whole differential. So we think we fixed the problem. That was what raised concerns with our old one.
And they couldn't add those to the old one?
They could not.
Okay.
No, without changing the whole differential and basically replacing.
So it's not just a part of the cooling plant?
No, it's all internally, it's all done internally. So you'd have to replace all the housing, you'd be replacing half the piece of the load.
Okay.
So. So this staff recommendation to accept a low state contract bid of 147,453 and 79 cents from RDO equipment to purchase a 2019 John Deere payloader. If it's okay tonight and we order it tomorrow, we'd expect delivery sometime in July of 2019.
Any questions? Do we recall what the budget number was?
160.
160.
160?
Yeah, that's what we were estimating it would cost.
Oh, yeah, there you go. I'm sorry.
And it's more than 147,453?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It'll be 147,453 and 79 cents.
That's correct.
I'll move it.
Any other comments? If not, I got a motion by Rick Seiler to approve the bid from RDO equipment for the John Deere 544L.
I'll second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Mike asked me to comment. He, he called me this afternoon with, in payables, there's a 7,000 some dollar bill to, for tires. And that would be the tires you see on this piece of equipment for our 2012 cap holder. So they were actually purchased in January and we just got it placed for them now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, next on the agenda, I assume it's the second reading of the ordinance of changing the addresses of, from County Road 37 to 10th Avenue?
Yes, so for tonight, we'd like council consideration of the second reading and adoption of the ordinance that would rename a portion of County Road 37 and also provide new addresses for the nine properties that are located basically on County Road 37 between Trent Avenue 18, Main Street, all the way north to, I'm trying to go over there, all the way north to Highway 107. As we had talked about at the last council meeting, all other portions of County Road 37 had an alternate local name already established and platted and on the street signs. Basically, once you get north of the area that I highlighted on the map there, it was on 7th Street, northeast or northwest, depending on which side of Central Avenue we were on. This particular portion did not have an alternate name. This is rather off County Road 37. And as we heard earlier this evening, as of May 1st, with the turnback occurring, the road name will cease to exist at that point. And therefore, that is the date that we are proposing the ordinance to effect. Should we approve, signed by the council? I do want to note, the proposed name would be 10th Avenue Southeast, or Northeast, which would match with directly south of Main Street. Be part of our addressing grid that we have in place. I do want to note that it had two phone calls from tenants and our building owners in one particular building, the 203 and 205 County Road 37, concerned about the cost and the trouble they have to go through to rename anything from lettered to correspondence with their. concerned about the cost and the trouble they have to go through to rename anything from lettered to correspondence with their clients. And in those cases, it was an insurance company for both of them. And, you know, the road name will not exist after May first, so, you know, we brought this to you as quickly as we were informed of the date from the county, being May one, so they do have, from the time they're notified, basically the day following our last council meeting, they still felt that was not enough time. So I just wanted to point that out, that not everybody's completely happy with it, but really don't have an alternative to it. So that's kind of the timing that we're up against is to get this work, who would the council think we would publish next week, and then it would not take effect until May one.
Ken, but with the post office, would it still deliver the mail to?
I'm sure they would.
County Road Thirty-Seven?
Their mail, annoying with the tenants being on my duty chief's.
I spoke with the post office, it's going to be back tomorrow morning, but they put that into their system, but he said with our local delivery personnel, that they know the names and businesses and the individuals, and it's not like they won't get mail, but he couldn't specifically answer it. He said they have to put it through some system for the change of identification and that, but he said even with that, even if there was a slight delay, likely they would still get the mail.
Do these two complaints have a dollar figure that they were talking about?
They did not.
Okay.
They said it took a lot of time and cost a lot of money, but no specifics. I don't know if they contacted any of you, I just wanted to make you aware that there was a couple of complaints.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance.
I'll second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Next is the rent dwelling ordinance task force recommendations.
I'd like to actually talk on this one.
Why don't you let Ken kind of give his presentation and then we can get into discussion.
All right, so mayor and council is a follow-up to the council workshop, March eleventh date.
As council recall, we had just under two hours of discussion. We did have a lot of questions from both council and local landlords at that meeting. Number of the topics that came up, I provided bullet point list here, just a few of them that were brought up specifically. Ultimately, what I'd like to talk about tonight is the final suggestion from the council during the task force meeting was setting up a rental dwelling unit inspection task force, should you choose to do that. And if you do choose to do that, and we can certainly talk about some of the other items and data that was additionally rounded up following the workshop, but back in two thousand and seven, you group that had looked at the rental dwelling issue initially, you know, stemming from the Prague State's fraud issue with the concern of that limiting the number of rentals on block, and then the topic of rental inspections was looked at as well, and ultimately we went to the rental registration, but at that time, we had a nine-member task force. And what I would recommend is taking that back just to seven members, trying to get some parity between two landlords, two tenants, and then two community members at large, in addition to one council member representative, and beginning to reduce recommendations specifically. This would be supported by staff to assist the task force as needed. It could be myself, Chad London, Jim Garis, or the city attorney, depending on the topic, that would be talked about it in particular task force meeting. I do want to note, I don't know if the council received the request or not, but, and obviously, discussion on, the council needs to take place if you'd like to do this, but I did get an email of interest from Tony Kubish as a local landlord that he would like to be included in that, but I think before we talk about names, obviously the council is talking about the merits moving forward with the task force, some of the other questions that were brought up at the meeting related to data for rental dwelling units, including number and the nature of calls that we receive on those. And then also the information of different units that are already inspected. HUD taking a look at Mill Pond Apartments, through your checklist in here for you to look at that. USD Rural Developments is one that looks at Liberty Park Apartments, and then Scott County CBA obviously does. Philip Square, their inspection forms in here, just so you could get a look at what those inspectors are looking at. Then the final item, just to point out, research further that, as was noted, the city of Jordan had been tracking calls for service at rental versus non-rental units, it was not tied to LETG data out of the database that the police in the county uses, but was rather their own tracking of that. So we would have to talk more and certainly would do that if we got into a task force situation. You know, maybe that's something we would need to do for a few months to get some more data on that before anything would move forward, but I think that's another discussion, but the task force shouldn't be determined to do that, go that route. And again, I think the staff's recommendation would be to solicit inputs, maybe we have just a real basic application form, put some information on the website in the paper, see if we get names, and then ultimately have the council determine who you want that to be. And again, that's if you want to go forward with the task force, so that's kind of the number one topic, I believe, that we left off at the workshop.
Okay, Rick, go ahead, you got some comments?
Yeah, the, I just, I don't see the merits in adding this task force, it just makes a beard grating mess out of it really. I mean, it's going to confuse all the issues. We could have a open hearing next city council meeting, everybody can come up and state their opinions, and then we'll make the decision. And this is, this is a necessity that this gets done. You got safety issues, we had that workshop, after the workshop, when I talked to some of the neighbors of the renters, or the landlord buildings and properties. After talking to the neighbors, after talking to the landlords and talking to some tenants, and then I went over and looked at Liberty Park. I think there's a necessity for this, you know, and adding too much bureaucracy into it, I don't think that's really going to help. You know, you could have, like I say, an open hearing at the next city council meeting, we'll give it a yea or a nay, and call it even.
Well, what are you, nay or yea?
At the city council meeting, we'll just present them, we'll have the city put together their suggestions of what they want, and we'll do it as a motion.
So you're looking at basically what the ordinance was written by the attorney?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to clarify, am I?
Yes, no, I don't.
I'm just trying to clarify what, where you're going to, that if that's what you're looking at.
Yep.
As the.
I'm looking at.
Instrument that we would be evaluating.
This inspection sheet here, and this, this one here is perfect, and here is a colony one. The inspection sheet, it checks bases on the condition of it, the appearance of it, the electrical safety, the plumbing. And, you know, the main thing is, you know, the neighbors are the ones that impress me the most. I mean, they're the ones that have to live next door to these properties, and when these properties start deteriorating and nobody does anything, when the grass grows and the daisies blow, or the dandelion blooms in the next yard, you know, you've got tenants that get upset about that, or renters, or neighbors that get upset about that. It's about the condition of these properties in the city, I mean, we'd like to keep up some sort of appearance, it's a very cute city, I like this city. So, you know, I, and, you know, as a small town like this, we're not going to accept, you know, homeowners to operate in our, you know, community. So these properties need to be kept up, and it's more of an enforcement issue than it is trying to please a landlord. We're not asking the landlords, we're telling them. And it should be something that the city does, I mean, in the big city, we do it, why shouldn't we do it here?
What kind of comments did you get from some of the tenants that you spoke to?
Well, there was insinuated last, last time that the, the conditions that all the apartments or all, you know, the properties, oh, we'd never be homeowners, you know, we run a, we run a clean business, and then when I went through the one property, the wall figure was half torn, you know, there was some holes in the walls, and then the tenant that I spoke to, they had requested their toilet wasn't working, and I mean, it was like three months before it had gotten fixed. It did finally get fixed, but with an attitude, you know, and this takes away, you know, last, at the workshop, there was a piece of paper submitted to you, and there was state ordinanceism, and who's going to go through all that to, you know, what kind of tenant is going to go through that process to get a landlord to do something? So, I don't know. You know, and I'm looking at this, and I'm trying to take some of the politics that are, you know, we got, I got emails, you know, and the landlords wanted to pretty much tell us we were going to put on this, this task force, and I'm not okay with that either. You know, you kind of stagger the deck. We'd like to hear your opinion, we did hear your opinion, and on an open hearing, we would hear your opinion, so, and then it would be on the record in front of the camera, and it just seems a little more on the up and up. You know, we just don't want the appearance of adding more bureaucracy to something that, this is a safety issue. I mean, this isn't, this isn't anybody doing anything, you know, retaliation towards anybody. I'm, I'm looking at this a lot more objectively than what a lot of people are, because I am in this community, but I have a lot of this experience in this, in this field, so, I don't know, I'm saying that the city shouldn't be asking the landlords how to do this. They should be telling them how to do this. And I don't know, it gives a little direction and there's some authority to it. You know, these enforcement people have to go into these properties and, and deal with this. I don't know if you guys have ever seen a, but we had Chad come over to Mill Pond, and it was missing a fire door, and nobody ever knew it was missing, but it was right underneath the dumpster, so if the dumpster were to ever caught a fire, the fire would have went straight to the fifth floor, the whole place would burn up, you know? It's good to have these inspections so that, you know, even, you know, stuck, we don't relax. You know, and nobody ever caught that, no inspection, no, you know, none of the prior managers were able to see it, but Chad walked right in there and said, well, there's the first thing, and there's this, there's this, there's this, and the manager said, okay, we'll get them fixed. And so it was more of an advisory type of thing, and I think that's what this is. And if you were to limit it to every three years, you keep the cost, I mean, what are we talking, to do this inspection for each property? Hundred and sixty bucks every three years? What is that per month? They said they're going to charge to the tenants, but what is that for a month, a quarter? It just, it just makes sense to have it, and like I say, I have an objective point of view on it. I have no political alliances with anybody, and I don't particularly scare easily, and this is what I think we should do.
Well, you know, you make some good points, Rick, there's, most of those things are what we were trying to get at with coming up with this, but it's, if you remember the last meeting, and I don't want to rehash it because that thing went an hour and a half, but I think the recommendation was to get some feedback from the landlords. We don't know their business, we don't know what's going on, get some feedback from the tenants and city staff. City staff knows the direction that the council wants to go in. So I don't see what the problem is, is putting a task force together and getting some type of recommendation out of it. We can always change it later, or if there's something that you see that isn't in there, and you want to make that case at the council meeting, you can, but I, I really don't have a problem putting a task force together.
Well, if you do do that, can I be the one council person that goes in there and try to speed it up? Because we're adding a lot of bureaucracy to something, that's a pretty simple thing, I mean, this is a safety issue, this thing should implement it, and we should move forward.
I would have no problem with that at all, I have plenty of my own meetings to go to, so, yeah. If you want that job, that's great.
I think part of the reason for the task force also was try to get a handle of how, how big of a problem this is, and clearly, there are rental properties that are not in good condition, but, you know, if we get some community members at large, we get some tenants, try to give us a bit more of an introspect of the things that they're seeing and having to deal with. And, and a task force, if it's put together, we can limit it to, you know, you have two months, you have a month, you have, you know, some designated amount of time to come forward with a recommendation, so that it wouldn't have to go on and on and on. I agree that for those properties that are not in good condition, that it is a safety issue. And I certainly want, wouldn't want anyone to live in those conditions, but I think we need to be thoughtful about what, if any, type of an ordinance is put forth and what would be inspected. There are some good suggestions here from the packet this evening, but I just, I would feel better if there was a little bit more information and a little bit more input by those that it's going to impact directly.
You know, I, I just, I don't think we're going to get an honest opinion from the renters because of retaliation. So it's not, you know, I have asked some of the tenants if they'd come in and talk, and there was a no, a big no, so.
Well, if we don't get participation, then, then.
We'll have to make it at home.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so if tenants don't want to come and talk.
But that doesn't mean that the problems don't exist, it means that.
I agree. No, I agree.
You know, and just to, just to add to what you said, you know, what's the fear of having this inspection? I mean, if your property is in good shape, there should be no problem.
That's true. And I, all that I remember hearing from the workshop, it was the added cost, which to a point, it doesn't seem, at this point, we haven't set any fees or anything, I mean, this is all very preliminary, and Chad was just able to give us an estimate about how much time it would take to inspect each unit. So. I just, I want to be a bit more thoughtful about it. I mean, I understand from where you're coming, Rick, and I think it makes a, it's a good decision to have something so that it can protect the renters without having to go through the court system, which is arduous.
Right. And, you know, I take what the landlords were saying about, well, you can't get people evicted, and I didn't like the way they said it, but I agree there's a problem there, and that's going to be one of my other projects, and I'll start going to the county, and I would like to be under judiciary review, just, I want accountability from these judges like that. I mean, you can't make these landlords responsible for, you know, you know what I mean? And then, well, if they go to get somebody evicted, they usually get shut down, especially because there's so many issues with housing right now. They don't want to kick anybody out on the street, so the judges will come up with some other solution. They won't go through with the eviction, and so the landlords are stuck with them, you know, and then now they start, you know, being bad, and then they, they get in trouble for that. Are you with me?
I think I'm following, I'm not a hundred percent with you.
Yeah, I know, and I'm going kind of fast, but.
Are you saying I'm slow?
No. I don't know. So if we do the task force like that, can we have the city, you know, can we have money to put this together, inspect it's not, okay, do this, do this, do this, do this, you know, let's have the, let's have the, what did you want, you want a six-person task force?
Recommending seven.
Seven?
We had nine for the one back in two thousand and seven, early two thousand and eight.
Because the tenant that I talked to, I know that she's not going to want to come in here, but I would love for her to come in because it's a perfect testimony.
Well, we can certainly encourage anyone that wants to express themselves to contact us or email us with concerns.
You know, just one other point I wanted to make on this, so that everybody can kinda soak it in. Those are our, our grandmas, our mothers that we stick in these properties, you know? The ones that worked as waitresses all their life, um, and, and now don't have the money to go retire all beautiful in a townhome. These are, these are people that worked very hard in the community. And it's our mothers, that's our grandmothers. Um, in my building, uh, half of the city is related to them people in my building, you know what I mean? And so why would you wanna stick them into a property that's...
Nobody's saying that we would.
No, don't, it's, yeah.
You know, and then the other one is, uh, the one that I talked to, I said, well, why don't you move if it's that bad? And it's simple, she couldn't, you know? So she's stuck with where she is.
Right. No, and I, and I'm not advocating that anyone have to live in a substandard rental unit. I just would like to be more thoughtful about moving forward with an ordinance of what are the expectations? Um, you know, what do some of the tenants, what, what, what do some of our community members at large want? Because it will affect, you know, those individuals. Um, we don't have to take a recommendation, you know, this could just be a discussion, be documented, some ideas that maybe would help us move forward in the event we choose to adopt an ordinance. Bring in some more ideas.
All right, I'm with that, I guess. Um, and you've got a platform that you, that you got set forward to, um, an outline of what you want the task force to discuss. And who's gonna discuss it, or?
Well, I think to Maggie's point, a lot of the discussion was, you know, number one, gather feedback from the task force members, and they certainly talked to other constituents of them, whether it be the landlords, sign another landlord's, tenants, sign another tenant's, however that might be, and then, you know, the at-large members trying to gather a little more information here. Um, and it might ultimately turn out that, to your point, Maggie, maybe it is not a big enough problem to move forward at this point. I don't know, but I think it's worth exploring that a little bit.
Yeah, I don't wanna shoot it down, but I just would like to gather some more information and some more input.
Okay, it's certain, I could, I wanna add, we certainly do have a list of all the landlord, um, managers for the properties, et cetera, that we could solicit that from, um, in addition to just putting it in paper. So I think we could be more direct with it.
That would be more appropriate. Because it, like I say, you're not gonna get response from some people.
I would, I would tend to believe we'll have, well, I already, you know, I already noted that, uh, Tony Kubish noted that he would like to be on it. I don't know, I don't wanna speak for Craig, he may wanna be on that. Uh, Joe Lambrecht, that was here earlier, may wanna put their name in the ring, so I think it would be more of, maybe a bunch of names, try to determine who you'd like on there.
Tony Kubish, it allows for diversity of opinion, if you explore the topic and the, the scope of what goes into that, and what it can do, and what should it do, and, you know, what are all those realms? And so I think if, if you fundamentally agree with what Ken's recommending as the outline of that seven-member committee, that is the process of how to use solicit names or whatnot for you to consider putting on that task force for those that wanna make themselves available to participate in that discussion. So, we're certainly not here tonight to tell you who people should be, but they should be given an opportunity if you desire to, uh, assuming the list came up, but ten or twelve, that you could look at those names and decide collectively, you're gonna have to reach a consensus somehow as to how you put a couple of those people on that committee.
Ken, I just, um, I've, I've been on a number of task forces in the past with different things, and some of them have been functional, some of them just... ...functional, and oftentimes it's more the objectives of the task force are not outlined. And I have trouble understanding what are the tasks we're asking this task force to do? And if it's being a sounding board or opinion or getting thoughts, that's more of a public hearing kind of a thing. If we're asking them to find data or talk to twenty tenants or do a survey, that's a task that can be accomplished and achieved. But I'm not sure that I'm wanting seven people to develop an ordinance. So, I'm not saying they wouldn't be qualified, but, um, I'm not really, really supportive of the task force unless we have a set of objectives that are clearly defined upfront that really we know what these people are, probably know what person to put on it if we don't know what we're asking them to do. And if we're not asking them to do anything, then it really gets to be a mishmash of conversations and, uh, what do you think of this, what do you think of that? And then, uh, then their biases come through as they talk to other people. And it scares me when we're talking about possibly, well, you talked to twenty tenants, you talked to twenty landlords, and we don't know what they're asking or how they're asking unless we give them a survey or something that's objective. So I, I just...
Yeah, no, I...
I'm not, I'm just, I'm not opposing it necessarily, but I'm not really excited about it, just because, um, I just don't see it working smoothly. Unless you can give me some reason why...
No, so back, I was not, I was not a part of the task force on a staff level or anything back from two thousand and seven with, with that set of tasks that they had at that point, was initially to look at, can we limit rental units on a particular block? And I did kinda grow, you know, from that point on, should there be rental inspections? Should there be a limit on number per block? And ultimately turned into the rental registration program to, number one, collect data, it's kind of the, the data collection, um, aspect of that, that came out of that. And the idea from that point was to collect data, which we collected from two thousand and eight through, uh, this last year here, to show how many units we have. Um, kinda nice point of data is really the condition that we don't know the bad portion of it, to answer that question that Maggie asked, are they in bad condition? As I know, we get about twenty calls a year from tenants about that they need help with their unit, they can't get things correct from the landlord. To explain, they're really unwilling to share that information, um, a lot of times for fear of retaliation. So we, we haven't been able to track where those are located, what the particular issues are. Then they find out we can't help them, it's, okay, well, thank you, um, and that's kinda the end of the call. So I don't know if a survey would gather that information.
I'm not saying we need to do a survey, I'm just trying to understand the benefits of a task force and the, what, what I'm interested in knowing is what's the benefits of the, of having an ordinance like this? And does a task force do that task for me? Will they, and do we need a task force?
To come up with the benefits of it.
Right. And then also, what's the trade-offs of it? If you, and to what scope would it be, and what's the benefits of it, if the scope is like this, or if it's like this?
Well, I think there's a couple of different things that could, the task force could be charged with determining ways to collect more data, uh, if we would want to do that. If that's the route you wanna go, if you think there's not enough data, then maybe that needs to be more data collected. Another charge could be looking at the ordinance itself and what are the merits of what it's trying to accomplish? Like it, as drafted and written was just the minimum life safety things. Is that what the task force would believe would accomplish what needs to be done, again, based on data? I think, I think a little bit has to be a little bit organic out of that, and ultimately it could stop, right? And just say, no, we don't think that...
Right. Maybe a public hearing is a better way of doing that. Benefit of...
It could be.
Public argument, hearing is, you don't have any, at least you have the ability to say everyone had the opportunity to talk, that you weren't relying on this landlord to talk to five people, and while he didn't talk to that person, or he didn't convey my message correctly, or... And maybe then people resent the fact that they didn't have the opportunity to do it or to influence it or something.
I think in any case, and I don't know, Mike and I talked about this, I don't know that we're ever gonna get great input from landlords, no matter what we do from then. And I, I know we'll hear from landlords, but a lot of the renters are very fearful of the retaliation factor. Whether it's real or not, they're very timid when they call. They are very unwilling to provide that information. That'd be, that's why we haven't been able to track. So I don't know, I don't know, I don't have a great answer for that. I would hope that we could get some input from them. I think there's valid concerns about the draft ordinance that landlords have brought up already. I think there could be concerns from tenants, but we haven't heard from them yet. And then just the community at large, are people having problems with, and I, we have that data from the, the nuisance information on where we've had, you know, the junk complaints and all that, we do have that data, um, and all those tied to rentals, but, um, yeah, I think a little bit for how you would like us to approach that, I think we need a little feedback. But to your point, Bruce, I think we do need data. I think we do need to collect a little more data, but what would the task force recommend that we do to collect that? And I think even from, uh, the police portion, Jim, you know, as far as what Jordan's done and, you know, I don't know how they've actually approached that, something I think I mentioned in the materials about, that's something the task force could talk about. Again, I don't know what time commitment that is even related to that, but...
I did talk to Brett before, um, that was on March twenty-first, uh, regarding how they collected their data. They were unable to plug in those addresses easily, but, uh, the, they have a year's worth of data right now. The only way they were able to collect that was every call they go on, they put a custom attribute on it, whether it's a rental or a non-rental, and that's how they're doing it right now. So, I can look at other alternatives for us, but, yeah, it may be that we start at one point and then start collecting data from there to do that.
I guess what I envisioned of the task force, um, and maybe I was wrong, but I, I was thinking that we have this, this ordinance, and we had a lot of questions and things like that. To me, I would, would use that ordinance as a boilerplate and say, you know, this is kinda what we're gonna look at. From the task force, then they should look at and say, you know, this is kind of a, or this is kind of skewed towards the renter versus the landlord type of thing, and come back with, you know, corrections or additions to that ordinance that was presented, you know, by our, our attorney. And from there, you know, then, then you can have a public hearing if, if you got some document that say, this is the ordinance that we're looking at. Because right now, if you're gonna have a public hearing, you're just gonna get the, the same feedback, um, and it's really gonna just keep us in a tailspin. But if it was my suggestion would be, if we feel that that initial ordinance is, is kind of a framework or a, a starting point, what are some of the issues in that ordinance that the landlords may have, or the renters may have, or the community may have? And then, because you can collect data and that stuff, but it's really, to me, it's, it's not gonna give you anything except data. It's not gonna tell you, is that the right way to do it or the wrong way? I, I think, I'm hearing from everyone that we should have something in place to make it easier for both sides to be able to enforce their rights. Right now, it seems like we don't have anything, so we can't really help someone calling. If a landlord calls or a renter calls, we don't have anything in place right now. We just have to say, well, here's the county number, or here's the state number for the attorney general. And, and I think what I'm, what I've been hearing through this process, and even previous councils that, that, you know, Sean and I have sat on, is they seem like we wanted to kinda go forward on this so that we can maybe have some kind of a vehicle to help process. You know, if, if it's inspections, then we feel comfortable that, hey, we know everyone has working smoke detectors, or everyone has, you know, CO deals and things like that, and, you know, the, the floors aren't breaking through or something like that, you know, type of thing. But that was my envision of the task force. It wasn't just to put people together and say, okay, you know, what's your opinion on this, what's your opinion on this and this? I, I think I was looking at saying, okay, we had kind of a, a boilerplate or a foundation from our city attorney that this is what he recommends would be a good ordinance to put in. Now, the, the landlords had some issues and type of things, well, then we kinda looked at it and said, okay, let's get a group together, people look at these things, and look at section one, kinda like the charter commission did before. You know, what happened in section one that needs to be corrected to this day and time? You know, kinda look through that thing and, and, and come back and say, you know, well, we have an, an ordinance that we feel can work for both parties. That's what I...
Well, that's politically correct, you know, but you're, we're looking at Jim and the fire marshal Chad, and the firemen, um, and the officers that have to go into these properties, you know, and it's, uh, if you've got a problem tenant, then he's gonna be there, um, every night or the week, you know? So, uh, there's gotta be a mechanism where that, that can, you know, but there was another issue that came up, and I'll talk to you guys about that one later, um, but, um, I don't know. You got anything?
No, I'm ready to make a motion with you as the council rep on the task force, so to move forward with the task force.
And what's, what, what are we gonna ask the task force to do?
Go ahead, Craig. Uh...
Thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I made a pretty impassioned presentation in front of you because I was upset about things that I was hearing. I think part of this impassioned feeling that I have, I wrote all of you an expensive email this last week, I think, which city staff was also included on. I detailed it from a landlord's point of view. And I think, when I go back, when I wrote this thing, I think I go back to that meeting a couple of weeks ago, and when I stand in the audience, I, I'm thinking what I heard. And I won't name different names of the council, but what I heard is that we don't have enough information, we need to gather information. Again, I, I dealt on it in, in my email to you, reacting, making this, all this talk about new ordinances and task force and everything, over twenty complaints. We don't know, and staff has admitted, we don't know if those twenty complaints were individual complaints, we don't know if they were duplicates, we don't know what, over what course of time they took place. Are we talking the last six months, are we talking the last year? You don't have addresses of the places, you don't have the nature of what the complaint was. What I'm saying to you is, and I said it in the email, they said, I've never seen a council react on so little information from staff. You all work for corporations, you all work for businesses, or have in the past. When you've had a problem, your organizations or your, uh, corporations put together a task force of people, if there was a problem, they gathered information, and they maybe had, appointed one person to gather information. What I urge you is to keep it simple, gather information. If we have a problem, take it to the next step. If we do not have a problem, why, why reinvent the wheel? What I'm suggesting to you is appoint somebody that's not involved, city staff, but that's not, does not have a personal involvement in this right now. Direct all the calls to them, take the nature of the call, take the address of the call if they'll give it to you, and to document what that person directed the people to go to, to go to the police, or that the handbook on 504B was sent out. Rick, I heard you say something that people do not use the remedies that provided. I said in this email, do we need to reinvent the, the, the rules on a city basis when there are already state statutes that have been well thought out and cover every situation that exists? I urge you just keep it simple, gather information. Gather information for six months, let's come back and talk in six months and have a report that we had fifteen incidents. This was the nature of the incident, this was the address, this is how it was handled. Then let's determine if we have an issue and go forward. But to knee-jerk and try to reinvent the wheel, I don't think is the way to go. This was the nature of the incident, this is the address, this is how it was handled. Then let's determine if we have an issue and go forward. But to knee jerk and try to reinvent the wheel, I don't think is the way to go. I really don't. Uh, you, Rick, I think you said that some people were intimidated to come up. I understand that. I understand that, but you know what, there are remedies for those people. They have a remedy with the court system, just as we have a remedy with the court system. I dealt with it in the email. What do we do if Jim says we've got a problem at one of your rental places, Craig, you need to get rid of them? We've had a number of calls there on different things, and I would tend to agree with them. I'm friends with the police, I want to be a good citizen, I want to be a good neighbor, as I pointed out in my email. If there's an issue there, I want to know about it. If we go to the court system and do it the right way to try to evict somebody, and the judge says no, what are we left with? The city saying on one side they got to go? We're listening to a county judge saying no, that they have to stay? We're in a rock and hard place too. And as I said, I'll just end by saying what I said in our first paragraph. We're independent business people, we pay higher than normal taxes because our properties are not homesteaded, we try to provide a safe environment for every one of them. It's not in our best interest insurance-wise or morally to provide something that does not, is not habitable, and is not safe. All of our properties have smoke alarms in them, they have CO detectors. For you to think that we are being amiss in our roles as landlords, I think you're mistaken. Because again, there's all kinds of...
Did you direct it at me? Can I respond to that?
Please let me finish.
And I took, just let him finish, Rick.
I'm not, I'm not looking for reaction on these, you, I think, I said, I laid it out on the line on my email to all of you on Friday. I don't think I could say it any better than what I said. We're independent business people. How many of you, the corporations or businesses that you have, other than if you have aborted reactors, has somebody coming in? Do you have customers coming in and telling your companies how to do it? Again, we have to react to what the market is, we have to react to what situations are out there. To have somebody coming in and telling us, well, you've got to do this, you've got to do that, we might as well not be in business, and that's why we're independent businessmen. We don't want, we don't want your help, we don't need your help, we'll work with you to provide safe environments, but believe me, I think we're going, we're making a knee jerk reaction on a questionable 20 request. I urge you in closing, appoint somebody from the city to take all the calls, have them documented in a log book, what day the calls were received, what the nature of the call was, how it was handled, and let's talk about it in six months, and if we're dealing with 50, or if we're dealing with 10, we've got a better handle on it than what we have right now, than 20 odd calls, and we don't know what the, what the nature of the calls were. So, thank you. I, like I said, I'm not, I didn't mean to attack anybody personally, and if I did, you know, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't think you need to respond to anything, as I said, I think I've said it all in my email.
Yeah, but you did point out a couple of things towards me, so you say, keep it simple, and then you add "we" into it, like you belong to our organization, and you don't. How are we going to keep it simple? We need all this documentation, and we're going to do all this process, it's a simple inspection. Call it what it is. I don't know. It was directed at me, so I had to respond simply, and that is the way I respond, is that we're not reinventing the wheel. We're more than willing to work with the landlords, however, it's, you know, it's us working with them, not them working with us. This is the council, this is the city, this is about enforcement, this isn't about asking everybody's opinion, and that's what a task force is going to get, is a whole bunch of that, what you just seen.
Okay. Okay, well, we're sitting here again, and I know staff is looking for a direction, so what do we think? Do we feel we need more data?
I do. I know that the city has received some calls, but I don't know that it's enough to move forward with working on an ordinance. And it makes more sense to allow more time to pass to gather more information. And if that means if, you know, we log the calls to the city, Jim, if we're able to implement something on, you know, where your calls are being directed, you know, where we have crime issues, I think it just behooves us to know more.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't have a problem from my standpoint, if you want to collect data for six months, you know, that that's fine, but I don't know if that's going to get what we want, but, you know, again...
It may or may not. I agree, I agree. We might not get a call in six months, or we might get a flood of calls, you know, so...
I mean, I got a call just the other day from a citizen that lived next to a property.
I did too.
Me too.
You know, so, I mean, they're all out there, and the problem is they're not getting bundled to one spot, and even though you tell them, here, call this number, you know, unless it's, you know, broadcast out there.
And they don't.
Right.
They just, they call us, and they make these statements, and then we got to try to figure out how we're going to fix it, you know? This isn't just based on, if you get one phone call, and it turns out to be a very valid one, and some of you, you know, what kind of preservation of life are we providing for the citizens of New Prague if we let one person die in a fire because we didn't act right? And those 20 calls, you could times that by, you know, how many, because they don't, there is no keeping track of them, but who's going to report? I mean, especially in this town, where everybody lives together. I'll take you to their property, so you can see that.
I know it's property.
All right. Well, where do we want to go from here? Need to get a consensus to direct staff, what do we want to do?
Well, I'm fine with you guys' plan about collecting data for the next six months, I thought that's kind of the task force would try to do. And go to three months or six months, that's why I wanted the task force, but if we think we could direct it towards one person, the city, let me find what, doing that, collecting data just through the city without a task force.
Okay.
I'll second that, if you need a second.
No, we're just trying to get a consensus here.
I'm trying to understand what other data are we looking for besides just the police activity reports? I would recommend better logging the calls, you know, obviously, where we track that in one place. We've tried to do that more recently, where if we know we're getting a call, try to direct those to Dev in our office, but doesn't necessarily have to be Dev to track those, but to put that all in place. I think we've already got the data, and we haven't even shared any of that on the, one of the complaint outward appearance type complaints of properties. We can very easily provide that data, and we do track the nuisances very well, where we've got a known property and that type of thing. But I think the data we would collect from 10, let's say the 10 complaints, where they're looking for assistance, might be, you know, more basic to when the call came in, what was the nature of the call, if they'll share it, and if they'll share the address, but I think that would have to be, you know, not public information, because again, it's a complaint type thing, so we can't share who made the complaint on a nuisance call, we can't share that information. But we can, obviously, in most cases, because of our ordinance, is we can submit a letter to the owner that says, you know, clean our backyard, mow your grass, I think. So I think we'll, we'll have to be a little creative on what information we can get when we do get calls, and then, you know, obviously, what information we can get from these calls and try to establish that a little too. But we do, I think we do have a good listing of the rentals, so I think that's not...
To back that up a little bit, you know, we could either put out a notice, or maybe I'll write the letter, the next letter, if somebody wants to trade August with me. I'll write the next letter that goes on utilities, and let's get the complaints in, I mean, let's hear what you, what folks got to say, and that way it becomes unproluded. You can call anonymously and talk to Ken, Mike, me, Chad, Jim, and let's find out what's going on in the community, and I'll write you a next letter. So, I don't know, I have an idea.
Okay, well, it sounds like consensus is that we're...
I just want to be clear, so the only two pieces of data we're looking for is police call activity and tenant phone calls.
Tenant calls, and then I would say the outside calls from people...
Live next door.
Live next door, you know, that...
That'd be police activity.
No, actually, just nuisance complaints.
Yeah.
So it'd be tenants or anyone then?
Right, right, I would think anyone that would...
Yeah, I don't want to just say, I don't want to say we're looking for problems, because that's certainly not the right way to go about it, but any feedback people would offer.
So what I'm hearing, then, those are the only two areas of data that we're looking for.
You know, we have police nuisance and safety. Fire department, what do you, what do you know, I want to know, I want to know if that, have you ever had a fire in your apartment? Couldn't get the fire department in there, I want to know, the fire department couldn't get a stretcher in there? Just a wide variety of information, and let's get the numbers, like you said, you know, let's, let's do it, and let's see how we like the response. I don't think anybody's going to like the response.
I didn't understand it, I'm not sure staff understands that last bit of information you're asking for.
So you're even looking for...
Police, fire, and nuisance.
But to your point, you were even bringing up, if a fire had been in a building, that's what it didn't even...
People might be right, police, fire, and nuisance, and then leave it, a little ambiguity to it so that people, you know, I want to hear some response, and then people are scared to respond, so... Who has the next newsletter?
I do.
Will you trade May for August with me? You got something going?
Yeah, I've got drafts going, so, and I don't know that, Rick, I can agree with you to, that that's the venue for the newsletter. But if it's the police, the nuisance, calls to the city, and Rick, are you saying that if fire is called, let's say for a lift assistance in someone's residence, and they know, they see something that is not a safety issue?
No, I don't want to make the case for enforcement, I want to know if you couldn't get the stretcher in there because it's, the house is in such a mess, or if the firemen have to go in there and they fall through the floor, I want to hear them kind of reports.
And they may not be tied only to rental.
Right.
Let's do the rental first, and then we'll figure out the rest later.
I don't think you're going to have people willing to have an ordinance that...
Well, you know, I don't want to make it too, you know, and that's kind of what Bruce was kind of indicating, is if we make it too broad, we're going to get the whole ball of wax, I mean...
I think that's why, I think we, you know, if we get police calls to a, obviously to an address that's rental, and constantly, then we know there's a problem at that house. If we get complaints from neighbors that there's trash in the backyard, and they don't take care of the thing, there's problems with that house. I mean, those are obviously, obviously ones that are, you know, when people do complain about, you know, they, they don't go to and say, hey, I went over and took so-and-so some cookies, and I looked in their field, and they had, you know, they're hoarders, I mean, you know, that, you know, that can happen also.
Yeah, but like I said, we don't want the firemen or the neighbors or whatever to be the policeman, you know what I mean, so...
But I mean, if someone, you know, I guess to Bruce's point, I think he's just looking at, if someone calls in and says, I'm going to talk to Dev, and I'm just using Dev as an example, I'm not saying she's going to be the focal point, but if someone calls in and Dev says, hey, you know, I live next to XYZ house, and this is the address, and the place is, looks like hell and all this stuff, and I know it's a rental property, you know, type of thing.
And they may call and not even notice what we...
Right, right, yeah. But I hate to say it, most of them know, it was their neighbors.
And I think the point that I'd like to make here is that we're, some of us were willing to move forward to actually looking at the ordinance and saying what works and what doesn't, based on approximately 20 calls that we've received. So if we expand that just a little bit over a six-month period or a nine-month period, it'll hopefully give us a sense, does it make sense to move forward or not? I mean, we just, I just don't feel good about moving forward with an ordinance based on a few calls that we've received over the course of a year.
So what do you want it to be, six months?
Well, we can, yeah, I mean, we can do it six months and see what comes in, I mean, we don't have to rush into anything, right? This is still on the table for us to look at.
And we're all here for two years.
I'm a big man, I think.
Yes. I mean, I'm in on that, yeah. Bruce and I might be caught.
Mayor Craig, you have it?
Yes. Just one final comment, and when I sit here and listen, I hear one thing, and again, we have, we have a procedure in place that if there is a problem for safety, if there's a problem for garbage in the yard or uncut lawns, we have a procedure already. I personally would welcome those letters. If there's a nuisance call at one of my places, I would welcome the letter because then I have something that I can go back to that tenant to say, you've got to correct this or you're going to leave. I, we have a procedure in place already, I don't know, how many nuisance letters go out here?
Over 200.
I've never gotten one. I'd welcome one if I had one. I think I take good enough care of my property that I'm not going to get any, but if I got one, I would be on it. So we have a procedure in place. Again, I don't think we need to go much further, I think we need to use the tools that we have already, utilize the tools in the toolbox, rather than inventing some tools to put in that toolbox. Thank you.
Okay, so how do we feel, do we want to collect some data for the next six months?
Yes.
Rick said yes.
I'm comfortable with it.
Pardon?
I'm comfortable with it.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, I guess so that's the direction we'd like the staff to take, is try to collect as much data as we can. I don't think, and I agree with Maggie, I don't think we should throw an article in the newsletter or anything because it seems like you're soliciting comments. You know, you're more than welcome to talk to people and spread the word, but I think rather than go all and say, hey, you know, this is, you know, type of thing, I don't think we should solicit comments. I think we want to get a fair base of comments made, or calls from the police department and things like that, so...
We should like for six months, report back in October.
Yes.
That's good.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. Why would an elected official...
Let me do, huh?
Well, no, I'm just saying, it's, this is a request by Mayor Bill Plante, I mean, Prior Lake, excuse me, they're trying to set up a steering committee. Rick, Mike, and I don't know if you have talked to...
It's a scale initiative.
Right.
And it's likely what they would begin, once the appointees are made, is that they could be meeting over the next 12 to 14 months, with meetings possibly in the evenings to take a look at this trend, that they know there's a significant difference needed and provided for the three larger cities, and then you've got around...
and then you've got around each of the two sides down in Argera, you've got four of the smaller cities. And that we, we have, as we included your package, is we've got transit services coming out of Smart Link in Scott County and Crew Transit in Sulu County by way of Blue Earth and Nettle. And so, they're trying to do planning, as you can see, the extensive nature of the transit material, and there's been a change over time on dealing with all of this transit in the county. And you, Lisa Fries, who sent Tony tonight as a county engineer, even in trying to talk to her, is that this has changed enough, and if you had a chance to glance through and read through what, what some of the goals were and the principles of service in providing transit, that has changed over the recent number of years. And so, collectively through scale leadership, is they're wanting to explore a number of different elements, as you can see on page two of Mayor Kirkbrink's letter, all of the urging of a follow-up to the scale executive committee that met back in December, trying to take a look at how they could go about garnering, collecting additional transit information through a collective, elected group of officials across the county, as well as probably some likely staff support that Ken sits on the transportation and...
Tech, I got the tech team.
Tech team. And so, there will likely be some support that way from the staffing standpoint, but Scott County through Lisa Fries's office would be the primary staff support for Scott County to this. So, that's all I know and can tell you that we've not, we've not had transit as a major topic, you know, in the time I've been here, is that we've tried to search out and make sure we can kind of connect, and we have challenges that if you've got somebody on the Scott County side that wants to go to Mankato, this busing stops at Main Street and they don't cross the line typically in, in that service. So, what, or what our hopes could be on the Scott County side with what they're looking at for the larger cities, they're looking at the route from Mankato up to between the cities, and you've got Elko that's been looking at their coordination on the Interstate 35 system, and that everybody simply has different ideas and goals and objectives in the process. And so, they're just trying to put together an updated committee to begin the dialogue and discussion.
Okay. Rick, is anyone else interested in serving on this?
This will likely be meetings up to, likely shock of the...
Yes, Smart Link. I love you on this is why. When we went to the Capitol at one time for our elected official legislative conference, that ride cost $389 through the roof, and that was charged to the county. That is tremendously, that's horrible. The fact that I can't move around in those chairs, that's horrible. You know, I can't, I shouldn't, was moved at my age, I'd like to get out, there's a bunch of stuff I'd like to get out and do, but you just can't find transportation, you know? And me getting a van is just, it's not in the books very well. So, you know, this is something that really is kind of along my lines.
Okay. So, better, better public transportation for the, for Greg?
Um, yes, definitely.
Okay, well, I guess I'll make a recommendation to have Rick Seiler sit on the steering committee. If someone wants to make a motion to that, and my appointment of Rick to the steering committee.
So...
Get a motion by Maggie Basing, by Bruce Wolf, the appointment of Rick Seiler to the steering committee. There's no other further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in the opposition? Okay.
I abstain.
Or nothing? Rick, you're going to be excellent on there.
I hope so.
Well, you, you can get to see the view, but just don't. And there's some advantages to that.
In order to bring about mobile to come into the...
Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, any issues, and anything in the consent agenda?
I could ask this outside the agenda, but just to understand the liquor application. I forgot they still serve beer up here. But that application is different than the other one. I'm assuming that application doesn't go to the state or, and that's why we have our own internal application form.
No, I said it goes to... Which one is it?
Well, the second one, the 3-2 does not match, the first one does.
And that's why we have our own application form, and it's, we don't require insurance?
No, typically not. But because it's in our park and we work with the chamber, we do require insurance on our property. If it was on somebody else's property, there would not should be a requirement that it's needed.
So, truly, if the chamber themselves, if they want, is it any shop insurance or liquor liability?
Well, no, if like St. Clint's serves beer on their property, they don't, we don't require insurance for it. But since they're in our park, we will require cert, that the chamber was using the park without, had insurance for it.
Yeah, the city, the city is named.
As an additional insurance.
Yeah. Because it's an event in the park that the chamber is hosting, and we had to give approval.
Listened on the application or required on the application?
No, we just take care of that separately.
But on the state form, it does ask. Okay. I just wanted to help you do it. So, how do we know we didn't miss it? Okay.
Really? It's a 3-2 beer license.
Well, I used to be involved with, I remember getting the insurance, it was a big deal. But that would cover in case someone gets into an accident, if, or DWI.
That's right. We, we don't allow any events in the park or in baseball park or on any student property without insurance being put into place.
Okay.
That's just a given. As part of our risk management function.
And then the park board actually makes the recommendation to accept, to be able to host the event, and then that goes to city council. So, the park board looks at all the stipulations and being an additional insurance, just one of them.
So, these applications have already gone through the park?
Not the liquor applications, just the event.
Okay.
Yeah, the approval.
Those are last council's agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on any items in the consent agenda? If not, I'll make a motion to put the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in the opposition? Okay, miscellaneous. Mitch?
Good.
Good. Patrick?
I'm good.
James, welcome back.
Thank you. Uh, nothing more.
Bruce, it's always an honor that you, Bruce, with your appearance on so well.
Then I got to say something.
Well, you don't have to now.
Being you ought to call me up. Just got word today that our transformer for the substation transformer replacement is on schedule, so that's a, a main project. So, hopefully that stays on schedule because it's a key item before the summer heat gets here, so...
Awesome. Good.
On track.
All right, thank you. Lynn?
The contractor started hanging sheet rock on Friday, started taping today, so hopefully midweek, towards the end of the week, they'll have everything taped and can start painting.
Well, of course, opens Friday.
You know, it could happen.
No, it is going to happen.
Is it?
Yeah, we got to email him.
Oh, gotcha.
He is going to open the course on Friday, so...
All right, I'll have to work.
The bar is open at...
I'll have to walk, yeah, the bar be open, you can get to that.
Awesome.
That's all I got.
All right. Ken?
Nothing.
Mike?
Followed from last council meeting is that we worked out the language with the golf now application in the city attorney's office, and took care of the concerns that were noted by Bruce, that basically the one section on using our trade name or any of those things, we just changed the application piece to say no. So, it was very easy, they just hadn't asked a question. I asked about changing the language or something, and he said it'll take us a week to get it through our attorneys. And I said, it's, it's not worth it, so we'll just put it as no. The piece with the notification on the two-year agreement, as soon as I get back, the executive copy will provide our notice right away, take care of that, but we got word through both the councils, agreement with midnight, the additional review, we didn't have to make any further changes, and so that was good to go, so... And you already took the other, that the golf course opens at 11 o'clock on Friday.
Yes. Anything else, Mike? Barb? You aren't so quiet, Barb. Maggie? Sean?
Yeah, I have a quick question for Mike. I'd heard from a resident about those, the lots on 37 there that are for sale. Will they be assessed, even though there's not a house on that property, are they still assessed just with the lot itself?
I'm talking Lexington 37.
Lexington 37 where the work was going to be done along the...
I believe so.
Okay. One property, or is there, was it, he was going to try to put three houses on that. There were only five for one, right?
Put them all together. It's all for one right now.
Well, just for one.
As of right now, it's only one, so...
So, they pay for one regardless, but then the other two, if he goes to plat that two years from now, he's not assessed anything for 37?
Probably something that we could put into a approval resolution. Probably a question for our attorney, but we still have time to address it if he were to do that.
Okay. I just had one of the neighbors that was inquiring about it, so, okay, thank you.
Any else? Rick?
I'm looking forward to going to the fireman's hall. I'll see you all there. And it's casual, trash. Sport coat, too.
Wear your shirt you got on right now, you'd be right in.
Like you wish.
Bruce?
Couple miscellaneous things. With the closing of the pool, I think we had to adjust this joint powers agreement, is that process still in the process?
Yes, the draft was done last Friday. I've got a draft from the attorney, will be circulated and out among city and school as to how we deal with the, Ken wants the non-pool piece.
Summer recreation.
Yeah, summer recreation. So, yeah, we effectively have a red light document just about ready to go and to back into vote, well, to go to the joint powers group and back out to city and school.
Okay. And then, I'm wondering, Mike, you had sent me earlier the city council meetings of March 2018 where you talked about the priorities and things, and I think we talked about this before, but I'm wondering if the city council would be open to looking at this again, updating this, these lists of worthy priorities or which included different things, such as the rental license and also the personnel policy, IT infrastructure, all those things. Some of these, I imagine, maybe are not, are not taking place, or is this still kind of a working thing looking?
But if you put down from that whole list of items, it went down to the very end of it, I think that was the third page there, I don't have it in front of me. Is it kind of narrowed down that focus, but still leaving some of those other things on, on the list, but not highest priority?
Right, I guess with this particular council, I'm wondering, is this still a valid set of priorities, or aren't, isn't it, or are we working on this, or do we have kind of a business plan we're working off of?
Certainly come back and revisit that. At least kind of... The fact that we have...
And it spurred on by that email, and I think we all got with Brett Wagner, and I don't know if we were going to talk about that, or if we can talk about that at the same time. But just since I, we are due and knowing how we're...
Yeah, we could...
How we, how we focused...
We could schedule a, maybe a workshop in, you know, either the next meeting or the first meeting in May, kind of going over what priorities and what things that we should, as a, as a new council?
Yeah, I don't know that we...
Now, we're going to do that anyway.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need a workshop?
Well, it could either be something, let's say, we could have it started, you know, at 5:00 before a council meeting.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So that, you know, if that works with everyone's schedule, you know, maybe why don't we shoot for the first one in May? What date is that? 6th?
But generally, I recommend if you're going to spend time and focus on those kind of things, you know, you want to make sure you can allocate sufficient amount of time to, to look at that and not have to worry about jumping out of that into the regular council, unless you're wanting to try to save a night, so to speak.
I guess I'm open either way.
My purpose is, what I'm trying to get out of it is just a kind of a review of what's here, since I wasn't involved in any of this, but these still important topics are, are they not, how...
Or have some of them handled?
Have they been taken care of, or should we look at other things becoming higher priority?
Yeah, I would think that a special city council or a workshop would be great for that.
Sure.
It might take longer than an hour with those things.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, me, that's why I would think of...
Well, why don't we put it on, your idea was, let's pick a date at our next meeting, where we can get together for an hour and a half or two and kind of come up with council priorities. And I think, you know, one of the things I was going to talk about too today was this athletic facility survey, you know, and that's what you were alluding to also, but so...
This other item is just something that came in an email today, I think, deadline to adopt and publish small cell facility aesthetic standards. Ken, that seems to be something in your field.
Yep.
Is that something that we should be concerned in, adopting by April 15?
So, we actually have a draft of the small cell ordinance that we've had from the city attorney for, I worked on that over a year ago, I believe. It's never gotten to the council level, but the aesthetic part actually went to planning commission. We talked about it there, and it was never a priority to look at the aesthetic end of it, because that was always questionable in law anyway. So, from that standpoint, no, that it wasn't the deadline we were concerned about, but we will be bringing small cell at some point here, sooner and later in the council, to consider an ordinance for that.
My understanding of the reading of this is that the ruling came down on January 14th, and there's 128 or 180 day time limit, and if you pass it, you, you don't have the ability to establish an ordinance for...
For the aesthetics, you can.
You can't. So, we either have two weeks to do it or not, so...
Yeah, planning commission never saw any, any valid reason to do the aesthetic part of it, because there had been other challenges in law for the aesthetic requirements some cities had put into place, and if that was really even valid, even though the statute might allow you to even put that in by this deadline, there's still questioning if that would be challenged anyway by the self-providers. So, it just wasn't an area our attorney recommended going down?
Well, if you would look at it and read it, because it seems to be a legitimate sort of cities that is recommending the city to do it, I don't know...
Yeah, if we were looking at doing the aesthetic part of it, but that, that was never anything that came up as a priority.
It doesn't have to be done as an ordinance, it can just be a policy, so we would still have time to do it if you... I guess I'd be interested why it would be relevant.
Because what, the way it started out, Bruce, too, is that the municipality, last year in the legislation, we, they gave us jurisdiction to, to not allow or to allow them altogether in whatever areas of the city that the, that the small cell decided. In this particular, they'll, they'll pick a corner, say Central and Main, and they want to be on my light pole, I had to allow them to do so. The legislator, legislation last year said, nope, the cities have jurisdiction over that or the municipality. Now, the FCC, the government on the federal side said, they took that right away from us again. So, now it's kind of back to the table, so all these things are taking place real quick. So, it's kind of a mess right now.
Right, and that's what I'm speaking, FCC adopted the rule in January, FCC has said cities have until April to adopt their aesthetic.
But that's aesthetic, that doesn't mean, you, as far as, no, we still have the authority to say yes or no.
We definitely will bring that ordinance in front of you, but like Bruce said, there's been so much change in that, even while we've been working on it, it's like...
Didn't know where to start.
Do you want to change it again, two months after we adopt something? Probably not. So, we've just kind of, just kind of held it there.
But I seen that on the league's website today, too, Bruce, to your point.
Well, I would just, if you could look at it again, is if there's an ability to, not by ordinance, but just by policy, being able to... being able to influence the book of something that may be on hole on Main Street.
Right.
Be of the ability to do it, and it goes away on April 15.
Yeah, well. Any else?
No, that's good.
Okay, I didn't have anything else.
I won't upset anybody more.
I, anything I had was that athletic facility, but we'll discuss that at our, at our workshop, so. Again, next meeting, come with your calendars and we can get that on the book to come up with some priorities that this council may want to do for the next couple of years, since that's really, we're stuck with each other for, through the end of 2020.
I love you guys.
If there's nothing else, I got a motion for Rick Seiler to adjourn, I was thinking that. And if there's nothing else, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, thank you.